Colors. Attention.
We just have to read out.
No problem, no problem.
Whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. Madam Clerk, can you poll the board?
Sears.
Agreed.
Seagin.
Agreed.
Cady.
Agreed.
Mr. Hirons.
Agreed.
Mr. Kiddie.
Agreed.
Ms. McOsser.
Agreed.
Your motion passed unanimously.
Is there a motion for closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to accept the recommendation for the appointment to the AP position at HH Pool.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Dr. Benson, can you make our announcement, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to announce that Mr. Andrew Aversa is the school board's appointment this evening as the Assistant Principal for HH Pool Middle School. Since 2013, Mr. Aversa served as the Assistant Principal at Shirley High Middle School. Prior to this, he served both as an elementary middle school teacher with Stafford County Schools. He began his teaching career in New York. Andrew has had a variety of leadership responsibilities while at Shirley High Middle School. He served as special education designee and facilitated the RTI process. Additionally, he has coordinated the summer school program at High since 2014. Mr. Aversa is a handle with care trainer for our school division. Mr. Aversa has a Bachelor of Arts in Education from St. Joseph's College in New York. He earned his Master's of Art in Education from Long Island University and his Post-Master Certificate in Educational Leadership and Supervision from Virginia Commonwealth University, where fortunate to be able to afford, Mr. Aversa, the opportunity to advance within our organization so we will keep it all in the family and welcome, welcome aboard to your new position.
At this time, I would like everyone to rise for our Moment of Science invocation and Pledge of Allegiance and our colors presented by our Colonial Forge Army ROTC.
Colors. Attention. Colonel Shaw, permission to present the colors?
Present the colors.
Colors. Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Arms.
Right. Face. Forward. March.
Colors. Right. Face. Forward. March.
Thank you very much. I would like, I would like to thank our Colonial Forge ROTC, which was commanded tonight by Second Lieutenant Galv. We also had Captain Miller, Sergeant York, Sergeant Pincombe, Private Watson, and Sergeant Gruber, and it was a wonderful presentation this evening, so we thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We need to amend it first.
We would need to amend to add...
Close session at the end of the meeting?
Regarding personnel, regarding, yes, personnel disciplinary matter and under 2.2-3711A1. It's been moved and amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The motion, the agenda is approved. We will now start with citizens' comments. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes are allotted to speakers. We have three buttons, green, yellow, and red. When it's yellow, you have one minute remaining. Red, when that goes off, your time is expired and you have five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting for a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. I have in our sign-up Ms. Dana Brown, if she wants to go ahead and approach, and if there's anybody else who would like to speak, if you would go ahead and stand up and line up behind Ms. Brown, that would be great, and we can move straight into continuing comments.
Hi, my name is Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way in the Rock Hill District. Just a couple of things tonight, I wanted to talk about CGS and some of your committee meetings, but first I wanted to thank you for getting tonight's work session posted on the webpage calendar. We didn't have that last time, it was on this time, that was great. Regarding CGS, I have an idea, a solution to a problem that we're having that we could solve probably free, and that is, CGS is mostly an AP program, and they're not regular AP classes, they're accelerated AP classes, so when a student misses a day, you know, just like in the other block classes, they're really missing two days, and it's even worse for the governor's school students. Kid misses two or three days, that's a week and a half that they've missed. My solution is to let kids who are out sick Skype in. That's free. Sometimes, you know, like for my kid, they're too sick to go to school because they're contagious or something else, but they are not too sick to lay there and listen to the lecture and not fall further behind. I did approach some teachers about it, and Dr. Benson and the director of the governor's school, they had some concerns, some of them were privacy issues, which I don't think really were realized because I think their concern was they don't know who was in our houses watching. The camera just needs to be pointed at the wall or the teacher, and that way the kids can, you know, get in there and get some stuff. I think we also have our own network over at CGS, too, and I did talk with the IT department, they know of no IT limitations why we couldn't do that. I'm not suggesting they don't get marked absent, I would still think that's an absence, but at least they could, you know, get in there and get some lessons. We had mono going around at North Stafford this past couple of weeks, had kids out five and six days, I think that really would have helped them, and I know like Ms. Hazard's kids, and my kid were on the same Model UN trip last year, and my kid came home with the flu, like many others, was out for five days. So something like this, I think, is a real easy fix, and I'd like to see if we can get that going like right away, because flu season's coming up again. So that was that, and then yesterday I went to your three-on-three meeting with the Board of Supervisors. Couple of things, I thought Mr. Snellings was right, I don't think we advertised the public budget hearings correctly, and it might be better to change the language. I know we didn't get any people at the last meeting, but because there was no budget to talk about, maybe say, what are your ideas for the budget, and so that was something. The other thing was, these are committee meetings of three, they're not full board meetings, so we need to remember that, and when you have more board members come, we can violate the open meetings law. We need to be really careful of that, because that violates Virginia Code 2.2-3707I. When we have more than three members there, we have to have meetings and post them. So I think our FOIA council warns you guys about this, maybe not all of you, because it was a couple of years ago, on these committee meetings, it needs to be three and three only. If you go, you got to talk and be silent. And then the last thing, I don't think I have time for, but it was about the forensic audit and maybe getting some records, you know, trashed and destroyed, hope we don't do that, because that would really set us back with supervisors.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing nobody running forward, I will close public comment. We will move on to school board standing committee reports, since the most, I'm going to go sort of in order of most recent, so I will start with joint schools, if there's any quick report, if it references later items, just maybe a quick overview, I believe Mr. Hirons.
We did have our meeting last night, it was a good discussion, I would say, positive discussion with the, the members from Board of Supervisors, and I'm just looking, did that become an agenda item for the MOU?
Yes.
Because that was one action item out of it. We did, in that meeting, discuss an MOU regarding the contracting officer between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, couple of small edits, and I believe it's on our agenda for later this evening to review and review as a board. Now let the other members give any other updates, if you wanted to touch on any other topics that we discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Hirons. No, it was a good meeting, it was about, it was about two hours. We discussed the Stafford High School update, we discussed any, if there was any outstanding funding issues with Moncur between the Board of Supervisors, school board, there was none. And we discussed the MOU, the contracting officer trying to roll this, once this MOU is completed, then we'll be able to close out the job, the MOU, or the contracting officer job announcement, and start selecting someone for that contracting officer job, hopefully before the new year, but that may be a little, that may be a little bit positive thinking, so. Ms. Healy?
Just to follow up with something that Ms. Brown mentioned, there was a request from the supervisors, they reiterated the request which has been made, they said on several occasions, apparently there's different communication levels that are taking place that don't get to all members of the board, which is a matter, I think, we need to address, you know, internally here, but the request was made for the backup materials that were available to the forensic auditors, and I wanted to make sure that we are not going to have any records destroyed at this point, because I know there had been, you know, a notice to us that, you know, absent any, you know, other issues, we were going to follow the law in terms of the retention time, but because we have this specific request from the supervisors, I think we need to halt, and I'm sure you probably got that, you know, message from Mrs. Cale, she took copious notes at the meeting last night, but make sure staff understands not to destroy any records that, you know, were available for the auditor.
May I ask a question about that, Ms. Healy? Do we have any issues with confidentiality as far as employee, specific employee, are there any mixture of records in there that we have to be concerned about, like employee performance and things like that, that we're bound to?
Well, Ms. Hazard mentioned that the records are in the possession of our attorney, and the attorney will be reviewing them to see, you know, what is, you know, permissible to share.
Okay.
Now, you know, if there is any issue with privacy, I would think that, you know, we would need to get a recommendation from our attorney, whether there's something that they could, could sign regarding, you know, non-disclosure, or if it's just, if it's not appropriate under the privacy laws to share it, then, then we need to, you know, say that, but generally with FOIA, when you say that something is not going to be given out, you have to list the, you know, general nature of the document, and you have to cite the specific section of the law that allows you not to do it. I mean, we're not, at that point, it would be pretty darn embarrassing if our supervisors had to FOIA us for, for certain documents, but we need to follow up on that and make sure we, we send a prompt response, whether it is, you know, an estimated time on when the materials will be available, or when we will have that, that response. I mean, this, it sounded to me that this response is, you know, this request has been ongoing, because they mentioned the administrator meeting with the superintendent, they mentioned that chair and vice chair of the two boards.
I've not heard, I've not heard that. I've not heard anything about receiving backup, requesting backup, never.
I think our request to them last night was to formally make a request or have a formal communication.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
All discussion prior was in meetings with no minutes, and so, you know, that was my point.
I just want to make sure that we're doing what the law says, what we have to do as far as confidentiality and, you know, personnel records, that's all.
Yeah, and actually, I would be interested in seeing some of those materials as well to the extent that they are, you know, available. I've mentioned that before, but I haven't seen anything. I know the audit's done, we're not going to follow through, we explained that it's finished, but there still is an interest in those materials. I think that's about it, right?
All right, moving on, the next most recent committee was legislative, I believe Legislative Committee did meet, and the documents they're bringing forward are later on the agenda, so we'll just speak to those at that time. Fab also, the Finance and Budget meeting was on Wednesday night, I don't know if there's any comments from any Fab members on that meeting.
We didn't really have a quorum until the last 10 minutes of it, at which time I had to go watch my son play baseball, so there's really not much to report.
Okay, and then final was Governance. Last time at our work session, we talked about having the retreat, so we were, the Governance Committee was tasked with coming up with some dates. The possible dates seem to be, that make the most sense before we get full-blown into budget, is January 21st, which is a Saturday, maybe the 28th. I would prefer to avoid February 4th for reasons of my own, but I can make that available. The 21st seems to be the, the best one to kind of do, it's right after the organizational meeting, so committees and stuff, and then we can get going, so I was wondering if we have sort of buy-in from that date, so we can start that planning and getting a place around here, but maybe not the same old being here, you know, just kind of get that planning going. But it is a Saturday, and I know we all said Saturday was better, so that's why we... 21st? Okay.
January.
I know, but...
And then we should, we should set the 28th as the inclement weather date.
As the, that was what I was going to say.
Just so we have a backup.
That's kind of...
That's the time of year.
That's why I wanted to start the earliest in the year possible, so we had follow-on, so 21st with a backup of the 28th, and that will be the main report from Governance. Yes.
They report the next one, then they do the report.
I think it's always the first meeting of the month is when it's done, so, not to... All right, then we'll move on to superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I spent yesterday and a good part of today with a majority of superintendents from across the Commonwealth in Charlottesville for the Virginia Association for School Superintendent's meeting. We had an opportunity to work on our legislative agenda, and I would say that in terms of a number of areas that what superintendents are focused on in this next legislative cycle are very much aligned with areas that our board has identified as high priority. More specifically, the focusing on the SOQ and positions that we currently have in place that we do not receive any state funding for, but recognizing that they really are essential positions, and that schools would be hard-pressed to operate without, without them, and it would be great if, you know, we were in a position to be able to get some financial support from the state for something that we're already doing. And then we heard from the fiscal analytics folks who tell us a little bit about how state finances are, which is not good, so we, and that's where we ended the day today. If, if the governor is able to hold education harmless in this current year, that would, that would be wonderful, and he certainly has stated that as a, as a goal, but he's also said that the money for those raises is not going to be there at state level. My, my concern is a larger concern, it has to do with what the state has done, or has pushed off into FY18, that it's going to make FY18 a little bit of a challenge for us. So just, just to put that out there, we've got a lot of work to do with, with budget. We are building the budget in a manner that is, that is even better than what we've done in previous years. We've got a number of departments that are using a zero-based budgeting approach where they are starting from zero and building up their, their requests. Sands Personnel, because we don't have the personnel control piece of our system in place at this point, but, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to identify savings, other places in the budget that might be able to help us in areas that the board has identified as budget priorities, so we will, we'll see where that takes us. On a positive note, I got the opportunity today to be the honorary starter for the middle school cross-country event at Willowmere. We had about 170 or so middle schoolers run what is essentially half the distance of a typical cross-country meet, but it was really well-attended, lots of, lots of parents, and, and I got to start it officially, so it was, it was pretty cool. And on that same note, we have a race on Saturday at Colonial Forge that will benefit the Stafford Education Foundation. It's, registration's closed, so please, if you haven't registered, don't show up to register, registration's closed, we capped it at 1:50.
Come cheer.
We, we filled it up very quickly, but all of the proceeds from that event will be going to Stafford Education Foundation, so we're looking forward to seeing everybody out there. The race filled up in four days, I think, so we're, we're excited about that. And that's the end of my remarks for this evening, Ms. Hazard.
All right. All right, moving on, do I have a motion regarding consent, the consent items?
Motion to approve consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items, 10.01, this will be basically the Legislative Committee's report of our legislative priorities. I can, you know, we can read through them, Mr. Hirons, Ms. Ayers, and myself pulled these together through, I can just give the highlights, I mean, I know you all can read, I just feel like in terms of letting people know, again, these tracked with the superintendent regarding the standards of quality, talks about no school division can really operate at the minimum standard set forth by the, you know, SOQs, and we would like some realistic funding there. The next one is one that is near and dear to many of our hearts, fully funding one school nurse for every public school. We as Stafford County do that, however, that is not a state mandate. We believe that that should be funded as an SOQ position that a nurse should be in every public school in Virginia.
Ms. Hazard, can I ask a quick question? Did you take these from the, from last year's? Did you start with a template from what we did last year, and then kind of just elaborate on that, or is this a brand-new, fresh?
It's sort of a fresh one, taking the VSBA things, also things that we had been hearing among different, you know, people, so these were the ones we can always add to these, these just seem like very tailored ones to what we were going to be requesting.
Okay, I was just curious on how you, how you built this.
Right, really somewhat from the VSBA. We also talked about permitting school budget unexpended-year funds to be placed in a dedicated reserve fund, that's been on the VSBA, not in this year's, but in other years, allowing flexibility regarding home instruction, which is something about meeting minutes. We also talked about educational technology, infrastructure, and bandwidth, the only way that we as a Commonwealth will continue to move forward is to have the infrastructure to be able to utilize, you know, the technology that I don't really understand, so. The Comprehensive Services Act, this has come out of our low, our day school, this is something that we have supported. We also included about including recess as part of the instructional day for elementary school, because many times that becomes part of our inability to meet our minutes, and that is a time that I believe is important, if anybody's, I know, an elementary school teacher, we know that recess is rather critical.
Did VSBA include this in their legislative priorities as well?
Let's see if this one was a legis... I know our counterparts in Prince William have, and several other larger ones, I have to double-check, I don't believe this was theirs, but they have supported it in the past, they have sort of done, when you all look at the new VSBA approach to the legislative priorities, it's different in the past, they have a brand-new committee, so they've really revamped how they've done it, which I'll talk about. The main thing about the VRS system, this is something I personally have talked about, this is somewhere where I believe we always have to be watching the state, because in the past we've gotten huge bills out of nowhere, and making sure that when there is a rate change, that it is actually defendable by the VRS board, and so we've asked for a hearing or requiring a report to make sure when we are passed along this VRS increase, which I am always concerned when there are not multitudes of revenues at the state level, you want to pass something on to the state, to the localities, make sure that it's defendable, that's where that was going. Eliminating the local match for preschool funds is also on there, which I have spoken with Ms. Massey. So these were the ones that we found very targeted and important, I invite, you know, everybody to read over these if you have additional concerns, and then they'll be, they'll be back in November so that we can approve them prior to go to...
Could you do us a favor, and just on the next draft, if you could identify what is being supported by the VSBA, and what ones we've kind of added ourselves, and perhaps maybe even who else is championing, championing the, the ones like the recess, if it's Prince William, if it's Fairfax, that would be helpful to know, too. During the discussions at the VSBA conference in November, depending on who's going to be attending, the legislative portion of that might be a good time to, to raise these, these other topics that are not on their, on their priority list.
Yeah, and to that point, Holly Kind touched on this, their, their documentation, their, what they, their publications of their legislative priorities and legislative, they gave a lot of background information, and it was, I don't really understand the process they went through this year, or how they tried to develop that, and most of these were pulled up, but I do agree, and we talked about it in the Legislative Committee, I guess we just didn't get to it to say this was related to an S, a VSBA, it didn't call a priority, but whatever you call it.
Consistent with, we had.
And, but then our next agenda item are the specific VSBA legislative priorities.
Thanks.
And that, the one about recess is not on VSBA.
No.
Priority list of their priority legislation, I think it was in the background document.
They've had, they're, well, we'll talk about when we get to the 10.02 to give some overview, but that is one that seems like also tracks with some of the same, we have similar issues to like Prince William and some others about meeting those minutes.
Right, and if it's not on the VSBA list of prioritization this year, you can help us. We may have, you know, added another agenda item for them for next year to, to be part of their prioritization plan, so, anyway, thank you.
So in that vein, moving on to 10.02, is the Virginia School Board Association legislative positions. As you can see, this document is very different from years past. Years past document has been like 100 pages of a position, I mean, 100 pages of, well, I mean, it was at least 50 or 60 pages, and so this year, I think they have gone with a different approach, as you can see by the format of, of their positions and priorities. I'm not going to read through, actually, every single one of these, I'll let everybody, but they very much track with us as our lobbying group.
This agenda item says the school board's Legislative Committee supports 13 of the 14 legislative positions proposed by the VSBA at this time. Can you tell us which one the Legislative Committee does not support?
Let's see.
It was the item, VSBA opposes charter school constitutional amendment, they want to get involved in that, Cragmire over battle before, the cart's before the horse, really.
We wanted kind of more information on how, when you oppose and stuff, we could change on this, we just wanted to...
No, I was just curious as to which one it was.
Yeah, yeah, and I meant to, I'm sorry, I meant to cover that, just at this time, we were still really gathering information and felt like that wasn't one we were... past document has been like 100 pages of a position, I mean, 100 pages of, well, I mean, it was at least 50 or 60 pages. And so this year, I think they have gone with a different approach, as you can see by the format of their positions and priorities. I'm not going to read through, actually, every single one of these. I'll let everybody, but they very much track with us as our lobbying group.
This agenda item says the school board's legislative committee supports 13 of the 14 legislative positions proposed by the V S B A at this time. Can you tell us which one the legislative committee does not support?
Let's see.
It was the item, V S B A opposes charter school constitutional amendment. They want to get involved in that. Cragmire over battle before, the cart's before the horse, really.
We wanted kind of more information on how, when you oppose and stuff. We could change on this.
I was just curious as to which one it was.
Yeah. Yeah. And I meant to, I'm sorry, I meant to cover that. Just at this time, we were still really gathering information and felt like that wasn't one we were ready to full, fully support at this time. That doesn't mean we just needed really more information. We felt the timing was interesting. I don't know if any other board members have any comments to that point. All right. Any other questions? All right. Now we'll move on to 10.03, and I will send that to one of the committee members.
Sure. I'll take that. Thank you, Madam Chair. 10.03 is the Joint Contracting M O U Memorandum of Understanding between the School Board and the Board of Supervisors. This is kind of what we talked a little bit about during our committee reports. We want to move this to action. This outlines, you know, who's in charge of the contracting officer, who the contracting officer reports to, and so on and so forth. And this memorandum of understanding between the School Board and the Board of Supervisors. We want to move this to action so that we can close the open announcement for the contracting officer for both the county and the schools, and so that the person kind of knows who they're working for. You know, all those behind-the-scenes things that we want to tell an employee will be solidified. So, subject to any more comments, I'd like to move this to action.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
That was one of the major questions that we all had was, who is this person going to report to? Is there going to be some kind of, you know, structure that allows us to kind of coordinate with performance evaluations and things like that?
That is covered within the M O U.
It is.
It does designate that the person will be a, technically will be a county employee, will come under their H R world and realm. And it does speak to the county administrator and the superintendent will jointly review performance. One of the things that we asked for last night that Ms. Ayers brought up, pointed out, was there was a reference in there that the school board had to give 365 days of one-year notice if we wanted to terminate the M O U or terminate the person. And the board supervisors probably have to give 90 days.
90 days.
And they agreed to make it the same for both of us.
Equal time. Okay.
It was technically done for budgeting purpose, because the person, that position will show up on their budget, although we're funding half of it.
So we're just, they're going to fund it, and then we have to reimburse them for it?
Something along those lines.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Money will be pushed in the right direction.
All right. Any other comments, or if so, Mr., oh, Ms. Healy?
I'm not sure that the way they made this change was what we discussed last night, because what we discussed was that either party could terminate it with 30 days' notice. But if you look at, I'm sorry, 90 days' notice. But if you look at paragraph nine, it says this M O U may be terminated by either party in writing. If terminated by the board, the board shall provide the school board with at least 90 days' advance written notice. Oh, it does say, if terminated by the school board, the school board shall provide the board with at least 90 days. Okay. So it is saying both of them. Termination shall not affect the contract's officer position. Yeah, they were very gracious in agreeing to make that change last night.
So it is accurate, right?
Yes.
It looks right.
You've got so many boards in there.
I know.
So I'll second Mr. McCosker's motion to move 10.03 to action.
Thank you.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to move 10.03 to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McCosker, a final one.
I'd like to move 10.03 to approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Joint Contracting Officer Memorandum of Understanding. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 10.04. This is, we should probably, it'd probably be good to get the motion on this one.
Do you want to move it to action?
So we can prove it and not get the late fee. And not get the late fee. So it's to approve attendance at the V S B A for our new member.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move 10.04 to action, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 10.04.
Has it been seconded?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. For approval, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Moving on to 10.05. We met this evening in work session to discuss the application and appointment timeline for the Garrisonville District School Board Member vacancy. Ms. Kidby tonight is communicating for as much as she can by phone tonight, so she is on there. I wanted to go over what we had discussed in work session. We had discussed that the timeline for receiving applications will begin November...
Madam Chair, before you start, should I make a motion? We move this to action?
Yes, that would be a great idea.
Motion to move 10.05 to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, move 10.05 to action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's discuss what the possible application, what the procedure would be. Between November 1 and November 30, we would be accepting applications for the filling of the Garrisonville District School Board's member seat. Those will be, applications will be available on our website. Superclerk, is that correct? And there will be an application process. If there are any, if there are any questions, there can always be called into our clerk to, for questions. Again, begin between, on December 6, the school board will review the applications that have been properly submitted and candidates that do qualify. On December 6, we will be selecting candidates for interviews, generally between 3:00 and 5:00. That will be a 6:00 meeting. Then we will follow on that Thursday of December 8, beginning at 6:00, we will be doing interviews that evening. So any candidates that are interested in applying, that is the night that we will be doing our interviews, is on December 8. If a decision is not reached that night, we will also have a follow-on meeting on December 13. I would ask the indulgence of the board, did I cover everything?
Thanks. Sorry. Tell me the time again on the 8th?
6.
Thank you.
What was the open period again?
November 1 through 30, the month of November.
Thank you.
All right. If everybody's put these all on their calendars, do I have a motion to approve the schedule as just...
Madam Chairman, just one thing that the public may be interested in is when will that be advertised? We say it's going to be open for the month of November, but do we know when it's, the advertisement is actually going to be available? And I'm assuming it's going to be on our website, and we're going to publish it.
I'll give Sheri the information tomorrow afternoon, the knockers appointment, and then...
We're going to go over the, make sure that we have the information about saying December 8 is the interview date.
But the plan is to advertise it, one or before November 1. Is that reasonable to say?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just because of the single night that we want to do the interviews, we want to make sure that that's bolded very well.
I don't have any problem with that. I just think people that are interested in applying are going to want to know, want to know when it's going to be out there and, you know, where to look for.
Did you make the motion? You made the motion?
No, I was still...
I asked if we had a motion that would like to accept the schedule as previously set forth.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We will be moving forward with that, with that process. Next, 10.06, approved, approved proposed amendments to Policy 4405 regarding holidays. This will, this revolves around Veterans Day. Is there any discussion?
Sure. I'll bite. So...
Thanks.
So we approved Veterans Day, and it was my understanding, that was, my understanding was wrong at the time, that it was for all employees of the school division, the Veterans Day holiday. And in fact, Dr. Benson got with us and explained the difference between a 10-month and 11-month employee. So that's who's, you know, the teachers and the teachers are off, and the 10- and 11-month staff are off, but the 12-month staff were coming to work. And that was not, and that was not my intent when I approved, and when I, we all pushed so hard for the holiday.
I didn't know that either.
So, I mean, I guess that was a lick on me on that one. I just, I just didn't, I just didn't realize that the 12 months fell, legally fell under a different set of rules. And it has to do with what's explained here in the, in the write-up. It has to do with the number of days off that we can be, you know, we want to make sure that we're not getting 15 holidays off, and the state's giving 12, and the county's giving 13. So right now, I believe it's 13 days is the, is the amount that the county employee, 12-month employees have and we have, our 12-month employees in the school division. So, and I understand that, but in the, in the light of, my intent tonight would be to, you know, what we take, we can take this back and look at it, but for the next, for our November holiday, for Veterans Day, I would like to, the board to support giving all the employees off this time.
This year.
This year. And then us go back and kind of re-whittle the policy over the winter and talk with the board of supervisors and see what they think about, you know, hey, you know.
Would we have to give something up in order to keep it?
Well, yes. I mean, possibly, possibly. And those are the, some of the things that I think we should talk about on the winter break with Ms. Cale and Dr. Benson and the pros come in, the H R pros come in and say, hey, this is, this is what we can do. And it's also a discussion that I think we should have with the board of supervisors. And we may bring it over to the three-on-three, Mr. Hirons, and say, what do you, what do you all think about, you know, the Veterans Day? Right now, I think they, they're off Veterans...
They have floating.
Yeah, but they have floating. They float. Also, I mean, I don't really think this needs to be a discussion with the board of supervisors necessarily. I think we need to make the decision
Right.
of the future. And, because it's related to spring break, right? The, the extra days that our 12-month employees have.
If the board has an interest in keeping the number of days the same, then we would have to look at some other day that we have set aside as a holiday. And we do have some time at, at spring break. However, what I'm hearing this evening is that the board is interested, perhaps, in not necessarily making a change to policy at this point, but to have further discussion about that at some point in the not-too-distant future.
Right.
But to go on and make Veterans Day a holiday for all
Right.
school division employees, if I've got that correct.
Right. And so, and so, and so part of the, Mr. Hirons is correct, so yes, we make the decision. However, I want to see all the options on the table. Maybe we can bump up to 14 if we talk with the board of supervisors and say...
Yeah, no, that would be the only reason.
And so that's a course of action that I would like to talk to them about and see what they think. But, so anyway, that's...
Yeah. I would support that approach, because certainly we want all our employees to have off on Veterans Day next month. But I'm not prepared to make a change in policy, particularly the same night it's presented to us for information, which is not our practice. We always, you know, have more time to look at policy, and the policy has a long-term, you know, impact. And I think we need to consider it. And before we do anything, I mean, if we add it, it's not an issue, I'm sure, for employees. But if we're even thinking about, you know, substituting or making changes, then, then we would have to get employee input for that.
Calendar committee.
Yeah, the calendar committee. But, but at this point, if we could just address, you know, declaring that Veterans Day this year is an, is a holiday for all employees, that would be my preference. And then, you know, defer this policy issue for a date certain. Is that the term, Mr. Nelson? Then it's not, you know, it will come back, but there's no set date for it to come back.
Could we, I think we could put that as a work session item, I think, for us to understand the 10-month, the 12-month, or for me, I will say, to make sure I understand them better, looking at multiple calendars. Are there additional things we would want potentially looked at during that work session? So we can make sure we've prepared staff to bring to us the information we want to look at. If we're looking at the calendar, in my opinion, broadly, days off, all of that in a larger sense. Are there other, I think we should have the policies of the county, of how they deal with flex days and all those kinds of days, just so we are aware of them?
State.
That doesn't mean that we have to do them. Let's understand what they are. Would that be something we would want to include in that discussion? Are there any other potential items of discussion?
Madam Chairman, I think that would be a good time to discuss benefits generally, because holidays are, you know, part of the benefit package, in my view, you know, that we, you know, offer to employees.
We can push the whole, you know, we're equitable on both sides of Route 1 and whatnot, but we are a little bit different in what we're taking.
I agree.
Like with the spring, we talked about spring break, and there are, you know, the summer hours and things like that. So there is, you know, I don't want to get too caught up in the weeds about making sure that we're equal with everything that we do with them.
No, no. I just want to understand what their flex policies for the summer, just so we're...
And they have some floating holidays, which may not be a bad idea for us. I mean, if it's something that would be advantageous to employees and doesn't cost us anything, then why not consider it and, you know, take it into, you know, a policy? But, but it's better to do these things in a deliberate manner after we have, you know, a chance to consider them and get input from, you know, all the avenues where we really should before making a change like this.
So, Mr. McCosker, do you have a motion regarding this year and Veterans Day?
Yes, Madam Chair.
If you do.
I do.
Do you need to bring this to action?
Yes.
First?
Well, I don't, we're not bringing the policy to action.
Well, how do we get to the policy?
We have this.
This is actually an exemption to the policy. This is not a change of the policy.
Yeah, it's just an exemption. So yes, we have to move it to action.
So you have to move this to action.
Okay. I move 10.06 to action.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This has been moved, 10.06 has been moved to action. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve Veterans Day holiday for 10, 11, and 12-month employees. The 12-month employees would be for this calendar year only.
Second.
Any further discussion, clarification? All right.
Is that clear, Dr. Benson? Does that mean...
The last part, Mr. McCosker?
The 12-month employees would be for this calendar year only.
All right. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will make sure that this information is communicated to employees. All right. Moving on, 10.07 and 10.08 seem to be self-explanatory. Sort of linked together. So I was going to say, I know Mr. Hiran and Mr. Suddath, I thought I saw at one point, are here. Does anybody have any questions about either of these two items? They're sort of linked, so I'm putting them together, but... No questions? Nope? Okay.
Is this Barry's stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, this is always good.
Is there any...
Going to move this to action.
I don't know. I'm, I'm sort of looking.
Oh, no, no. This is...
I think we should really wait on this one, but I, okay. All right.
I mean, perhaps it could go on the consent agenda if no one has any reason to put it on for
It will.
additional discussion. Thank you.
Was there any background on why this came up at this point? I didn't notice that. I saw the change, but is it, was there something specifically, a situation specifically that came up that makes this useful?
Yes, sir, there was. My, the administrative assistant in our office was going through policies, because she's the one who checks the driving records. And she looked at the policy, looked at the driving records, and said, we can't get seven years, so we need to make this legitimate. So that, that was how it happened.
Okay. Good. And thank her for doing that.
I certainly will.
Barry, how's everything going down there in the Transportation Department?
We're getting there.
Pretty good? Lot of phone calls, a lot of friendly ones, or...
They've slowed down.
They slowed down a little bit after the old bus app?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good.
You have one of the hardest jobs.
What about attendance? Is it better with the incentive program? Now that we have you here?
The first period, it was. I'm still watching what's going on this time. We're still having some absentee issues, but I think it'll...
But we're trying.
We're trying.
Mr. Suddath, thank you very much for taking care of my couple of different pockets of issues.
You're welcome.
I have a lot of happy campers now, so thanks.
Good. Thank you.
We also cut the budget on razors. That's semi-discriminatory. Facial hair, no facial hair makes no difference in the Chur Washington district.
And I'd also like to thank Barry, thanks for our work...
And I'd also like to thank Barry, thanks for, um, our work in Hartwood. And I think we're working really well to kind of, to come up with a solution to make sure that we have a bus turnaround area on Hartwood Road.
You're welcome.
So, thank you. All right. Moving on to, uh, 10.09 regarding the use of a contracted psychologist for fiscal year 17. This is very similar, I believe, to our item we discussed.
Does that say so- soiling?
That's why I didn't say it. I let you, I thought I'd let you say it.
Oh, Ian?
Soliant.
Soliant. So, it's not like Soylent Green? Remember that movie? Soi- anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Way, way off, they did.
Um.
Probably sol is the, isn't sol the Latin word for sun? I know in Spanish, sol is sun.
All right. So, is there, are there any questions on this particular item?
No, bring it.
Um. Do you, Dr. Clark, do you need this one approved tonight for any reason? I know last time I, no.
It would be great. It would be great for approval tonight. I think this is the last one that it is anticipated to be over 100,000, possibly, minus the contracted position.
Minus the position.
We do have one more coming, but it is between that 75,000, a little over 75, but under 100, so that will be an email coming your way.
Okay.
Madam Chair, motion to move 10.09 to action, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of moving 10.09 to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a follow, uh, motion carries? Anybody file on motion?
Yes. Uh, Madam Chair, I motion to approve 10.09.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, I would like to get, uh, either by email or some discussion at the next meeting to follow up on where we're gonna find that money to pay the extra $48,037 that wasn't budgeted. I, I mean, I know we're gonna have to do it because we have to meet the, the federal guidelines, but federal law, actually. Um, but just if you could let us know at some point, not too far in the future.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to staff reports. Mrs. Cale. Middle School, here we come.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. I stand before you tonight to provide you with Stafford County Public Schools 2016-2017 middle school class size report. Please note that you do have paper copies.
Yes, thank you very much, Mrs. Cale.
You're welcome. The data for this report is on, based on student enrollment in core classes as of September 30th, 2016. Our focus on middle schools included common scheduling, which is their second year of implementation, embedded intervention and enrichment opportunities for all students, their I and E time, and increasing world language offerings to ensure that every middle school provides students with two options of utilizing and by utilizing high school itinerant teachers. Based on the average daily membership, ADM, as of September 30th, 2016, the total number of middle school class students was 6,547, which is an increase of 52 students over the September 30th, 2015 ADM. Compared to the 2015-2016 school year, we increased the number of classrooms with five FTEs added to core academic areas. This table displays an increase in the number of classrooms from 1,018 to 1,047, in addition of 29 classes. In addition, our average class size decreased by .4 from 25.9 to 25.5. This chart depicts the core classes by department and classroom averages at each school. The average class size for each department are as follows: English 24.9, history, social studies 25.7, mathematics 26, science 26, and world language 21.1. Please note, world language classes are not required at the middle school level. However, all other core subjects reported are required. In efforts to address some of the most urgent areas of concern, the following positions have been released and/or filled after September 30th, 2016, after this report was done. One FTE for English at Gale Middle School, which was filled after September 30th. One FTE for mathematics at Shirley High Middle School, and is in progress of being filled. In comparing our 2015-2016 and 2016-2017 average class size by department level, we can see that we slightly decreased our overall average in every core subject area by providing the following human capital resources: 1.5 FTEs for English at Dixon Smith Middle School, one FTE for English at Gale Middle School, .5 FTE for English at Rodney Thompson Middle School, and one FTE for math at Dixon Smith Middle School. Our section span displays our focus on reducing the number of classes with 28 or more students during the scheduling review process in August. As you can see, this resulted in an increase in the number of classes with 21 to 27 students, which is a more optimal size. We do see a slight increase in the number of classes with 20 or fewer students at AG Wright Middle School, Dixon Smith Middle School, HH Poole Middle School, and Shirley High Middle School. These increases are a result of addition of a second world language offered at middle schools opened up, which opened up sections of English, because English is always paired with world language, teachers teaching across grade levels in order to cover larger sections, singleton subject areas such as geometry and world language drive numbers lower, and understanding the needs of our students with disabilities, schools often focus on maintaining lower numbers in collaborative classes. This graph displays a breakdown of the section span data on the previous slide. As you can see, we have a very low number of sections with small numbers of students and very few with high numbers of students. As we look ahead, in efforts to improve middle school scheduling, the Office of the Chief Secondary Officer will be working with middle school administrators to complete the scheduling process by the conclusion of the school year. By changing our timelines, we will be better able to forecast our needs, efficiently utilize FTEs, and hire at a time when talent is readily available. We appreciate, as always, the board's support in efforts to reduce middle school class sizes in the future. We look forward to presenting the 2016-2017 high school class size report within the next couple of weeks. In special thanks again, I always say it takes a team, and especially with these class size reports, it does take a team, and Taryn Akolin, Technology Department, and Dr. Parrish, who's here tonight, and Lisa Boatright, and Tom Nichols, et cetera. We certainly appreciate all that they did to help with this project.
Awesome. I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a real quick question. Um, world languages.
Yes.
For Stafford Middle and Shirley High, aside from Spanish, what is the second? Do you know?
Latin.
Latin at both schools? High and Stafford Middle? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is a follow-up, and you're probably expecting this, but I'm just eyeballing these numbers tonight, okay? Have, the first time I, I saw them. But, um, world languages, Rodney Thompson, 40% higher than the average across the board, and almost double Shirley High and Stafford Middle. Are we gonna do something about that? Or have we? I don't see any little asterisks saying pending appointments. I, I just don't think that's acceptable, to have an average across the county of 21.1 and to have an average in one school of 29.3, have another school with 14.6, and another school with 16. I mean, we are looking for parity here, correct?
Yes, and we will certainly look at that. Mrs. Boatright?
Okay. Well, you can, you can get back to me, but don't wait too long because the year is rolling along. I'll let you know if I have any other questions when I study this.
I'd just like to make a, a broad comment. The nice thing is, about these reports, I don't believe boards have received these in the last, you know, we've begun to get these. The only way we can figure out the things that we've got, that we need to fix, is by knowing that we've got to fix them. And I don't remember getting information like this, and I think that's what's great, is it allows the, you all to think about and how to fix these things, but when you don't know, you don't know. And I just wanted to share, um, some of the information from the Prince William County, some of their legislative stuff. They went after targeted new funding to reduce class size, because they have said in their own legislative document that they are at or over at almost every grade level of their class size. So, I just want to say, I know, so we'll keep poaching. No. Um, so, I just wanted to note that, that I thought that was interesting, that they came out and basically have said that, and even though this is a painful process and we're un, and we're turning and we're learning things, at least we're looking at it and trying to figure out a way to, to reach it. So, the only way we can do it is to know, because I haven't gotten any calls on that issue, which I would have thought, you know, I, I saw it too. So, it was just interesting to, to note. But I really appreciate all the work going into it, and it sounds like you and Mr. Nichols will be working to see what we can do. And as we go into budget primaries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll certainly report back about Thompson.
Just for the record, this is the second year we've gotten this, right?
Yes.
And I remember Dr. White up in front of us.
Third year.
Third year? I remember, yeah, the first year, I won't count the first, that was sort of a practice run. But these are, these are very comprehensive reports.
They really are.
Thank you.
We made some progress. Okay. Next, we have one more, um, report. Uh-oh, I've got out of mine. I think it's the financial report, Mr. Fulmer.
Financial report. Mine got. There it is.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Fulmer.
The, should have a hard copy of the quarterly report, I believe. And, um, I will not take credit for providing you a paper copy, that was Roberta.
She takes care, good care of us, always.
I would like to point out, we did add some footnotes to the report, just to, um, point out some of the, um, regularities. Most notably are re-appropriated purchase orders from 2016 that roll into 17 have not been loaded into the budget. That's typically something that when we closed out the fiscal year 2016 with the audit, the budget, um, for those re-appropriated purchase orders roll into the new year as well. So, the adjusted budget, um, does not reflect that yet, but in our expenditures, you will see a lot of those expenditures go out, because those POs do, do roll, the budget has not rolled with them. So, um, a lot of the purchases that we did at the end of 16 that were the school board, um, kind of pre-purchases for FY '17, um, so our re-appropriated number went up a lot this year compared to prior years. So, we've had a lot of expenditures early on in this year, and we haven't had that budget rule yet. So, no concerns there. We're not actually over-budget anywhere, and that's what the footnotes are actually pointing out.
Chris, those were the prepaid items that we selected, right?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. And the only major budget adjustments you'll see will be hitting our administrative line, and that is, one, for, um, our 30% holdback for the school site allocation. The rest of that, um, school site allocation goes out around mid-year once the adjusted ADM numbers, um, uh, come in. And then also, the, once again, those pre-purchases, we pull that budget from our set, it was a pre-purchase, so, um, we pulled the, um, those funds out of those accounts in '17 and have them in a holding account until we identify, um, the school board identifies where they're gonna go. And right now, they're, um, mainly being held for, um, state shortfalls and other items that you guys have approved, like the additional FTEs. So, you'll see where, um, in the administrative attendance and health line, you'll see where the adjusted budget went up about $5 million, and that's partly the 30% holdback and also the, um, pre-purchases.
Are there any questions?
No, I just want, just a comment, and it's, it's a very general comment. It's always amazes me every year when the, we have a $270 million, you know, revenues coming in to the schools, um, that, you know, the state pays 100 and some odd, the county pays 100 and some odd million, and federal government pays 2.7 million.
Yep.
You know, folks think that this, these, our local school divisions are run by the federal government, you know, like they give us $200 million or they give, they don't, 2.7 million out of a $270 million budget.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure, you know, and there's other grants, of course, you know, but.
It's a very small percentage.
Okay, a lot of, a lot of hoopla coming out of the, uh, capital, and 2.7 million out of 270 million.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, I was going to ask you specifically, Mrs. Kibbe.
Um, I had a little bit of difficulty hearing, um, Chris, as he was explaining, but I did want to make a comment. Um, first of all, I'm looking forward, or at least I hope the board is looking forward to the opportunity of having a, a more detailed budget as we, uh, entertain the, uh, conversion into our new financial system. It's absolutely amazing what that system is going to afford us in terms of data. And I think the public, not only the public, the Board of Supervisors will be very pleased with the kind of data that will be available at will and certainly on a monthly and quarterly basis. The other comment that I'd like to make has to do with our other funds. Um, this is, um, a budget that reflects our general operating fund. I think it would be helpful for the board to be able to have a quarterly statement of our other funds, our construction fund, uh, maybe some of our grant funds as well, just to see how that revenue is flowing in and out, um, if that's the will of the board. I'll certainly leave that up to the will of the board, but I think that would be very helpful, either at a Fab meeting or perhaps at a general board meeting.
I will let the Fab Committee look into that and then bring a recommendation, working with Mr. Fulmer, if that's the will. Um, I think that's a, you know, great suggestion, but I'll let, let the Fab look into that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, Mrs. Kibbe, I'm sure you like the, uh, format. What a, what a change.
Absolutely.
All right. Go ahead.
Sorry. I just also want to point out that our September 30 fall membership numbers have increased over the prior year, obviously.
Right.
And it's also a little bit higher than what we had budgeted for, um, state revenues. So, they usually, um, in the December timeframe, will send out revised, uh, state, um, schedules. So, we can hopefully anticipate. Also, you know, there's a compensation supplement that we probably are not anticipating having, but, uh, with the increase in ADM, hopefully that will help offset that decrease.
That's 10,000 students, basically, not nine, 10,000 students. That's what they'll send?
No, I don't think it's that high. I think it's like half that.
So, it's 5,000 from.
Oh, per, you're talking about per.
Talking about per student. How much does the state give us?
Um, on a, on a per-student basis, I, I don't recall. But I did the rough math, and with our increase in ADM over budget, um, it's easily several hundred thousand dollars. It's not gonna come up and meet the 1.2 million of the compensation supplement that we're gonna be short, but it'll help offset that. And with our, the board pre-approved purchases.
Okay.[1680.12]